Building heated by oil or gas or both, by air conditioning.
Right now by electricity.
Solar incoming sunlight.
Solar currently.
All right. Good evening, everybody. This is the October 3 meeting of the Select Board in Milis. With me I have the Clerk, Ellen Rosenfeld, Vice Chair Craig Schultz, Assistant Town Administrator, HR Director Karen Buray De Marzo, and the Town Administrator Mike Gazinski, and I am Erin Underhill, the Chair. We have a few, just a few things on our agenda tonight, but one of them is to discuss the Fall Town Meeting warrant, so that should at least prove interesting. Okay, so the first thing we have is vote to establish the MBTA 3A rezoning advisory committee.
Madam Chair, thank you. I know I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Weiss in a moment, but I just wanted to clarify some items in relation to this. I know there's been some discussion about the purpose of this committee. We have, the town has received a grant to develop a draft zoning bylaw that would be in compliance with 48th 3A. You know, the town doesn't know at this point if we will be doing this zoning ultimately, but as part of the law, if the town chooses not to, then there's certain future grant opportunities that will no longer be available to the town. So the town will have to measure that against any impacts of the new zoning it may not feel is worth it. But the purpose of this advisory group or advisory committee is to essentially work with town staff and the town's consultants, MAPC, to determine what would be the best zoning bylaw that would meet these requirements and be in the best interest of the town. So once that work is completed and recommendation is given to the board, the board will then determine whether the town goes forward with any potential zoning bylaw changes. So just want to give that clarification before turning it over to Bob to talk about more of the specifics of this program.
Okay, great.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Gazinski, for that great introduction. And before a vote is taken on to assemble this committee, I think three things we'd like to talk about, I think the quick things. One is a mission statement. Also, the criteria for the membership, which I think we've talked about in the past, and really, you know, what's the process for choosing these folks and hopefully choosing folks by the 17th, your meeting of the 17th. Before you, I have placed just a draft or a proposal for a mission statement. Every committee in, on the town website just about has a mission statement, and I think this would really give the members of the committee, you know, a target to go for and explain to the town exactly what the picture, the big picture is. So what I've presented to you is to propose to the town meeting a 40A 3A compliant bylaw that will enhance Milis' economic development, public safety and health, education and environment.
Okay.
All right.
So at this point, I think we're asking the board to consider taking a vote to establish a 3A advisory committee for the purpose of coming back to the board to propose a 40A 3A compliant bylaw for the board's consideration to put on a future town meeting, for the town meeting's consideration to meet the requirements of MGL 40A 3A.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question too, but go ahead.
Well, you have to come up.
Thank you. And I really thought I was gonna ask a question.
Jim Duffy, Exchange Street. So, so one of the things I'd like to propose, that every item on the agenda have a citizen's comment opportunity listed somewhere before it gets to a vote, just as a suggestion. The question I have is, is there any vision as to what this bylaw may mean, or how it would get impact, or how it would get, I don't even know the question, how it'd get administered, or what would it, a developer, for example, what would it mean to them, or what implications would it have, or, and in a greater extent, in terms of the landmass of the town, is it, and I understand we may not know any of this stuff yet, but the question is, is it gonna be a certain area of town, applicable to the whole town regardless, because obviously zoning changes and all of those things, so.
Can I just ask you a quick question? What did you mean by your first comment? Can you restate that?
The citizen.
Just an opportunity for a citizen comment on any of the items that are on the agenda before they get to vote or ask a question, or, you know, citizen's comments question, that's all. Because I have to sort of interrupt to say, can I ask a question?
Oh, I see.
We'd like you to interrupt, Jim. Looks us nowhere, doing our job.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I think the gentleman just very aptly discussed a major part of the work of the committee, which is going to be to look at all those factors. So that's why the committee is being formed, to look into those questions, to try to come up with answers to those questions, and then come back to the board once recommendations, they're ready for recommendations based on finding out the answers to those questions.
Right, but, Madam Chair.
Hold on, yes.
The one question that you asked that I think we can answer is how will the developer be aware of what this means, and that is, it will become a bylaw, so it will be part of the zoning bylaws.
So it'll demand density, first of all?
Pardon?
It'll demand density based on?
It would allow.
It would allow, right, right.
And Ellen was waiting in the wings first.
Yeah, I just had one question. So if our mission statement is to be compliant, what if the, what if the people on the committee don't want to be compliant? What if they want to say, we want to challenge this, we want to, what if?
Madam Chair, and I think that's a great question. I think if, if after the work of the committee is determined that's the answer, then that's the answer. If the committee determines there's simply not enough buildable land available to do that, there's, there's other, you know, things that create problems, there are other hurdles that can't be overcome, I don't know if any of that will come to pass, but that's part of what the committee is going to do. So if the committee, in a good faith effort, looking at an attempt to create a bylaw that makes this work, cannot find a path to meet that, then that's the response.
But I think the goal is.
Got it.
Right.
Yeah, got it.
Yeah.
So can I ask another question?
Hold on, I'm gonna let Craig go next, and then you, go ahead.
And just because the goal is to produce this bylaw, that's more required by the state, it doesn't mean that the Finance Committee or the Select Board may recommend this bylaw.
Right.
But I think having a bylaw that does all the investigation for the next year, brings it before town meeting a year from now probably, is my guess. We will have a bylaw that we say, if it's true they have the stick and the stick approach, not a carrot and a stick, but if, if these are the reasons why we have to consider it, this bylaw complies with it, and, you know, and we can either recommend adopting it or not adopting it. Planning Board will make the same recommendation, Finance Committee will make the same recommendation, or make a recommendation, may not be the same recommendation as the Select Board. And then town media will ultimately decide it. But, yeah, I think it's an ultimate goal is to come up with something that is compliant. We have a grant to work on it. We should certainly use that money to do it, and see what we can come up with as a solution.
Yeah, I think good bylaws, all bylaws come about through a process, and that's what the process is about, just what Mr. Gazinski and Mr. Schultz have said.
Mr. Duffy.
Yeah, Jim Duffy, Exchange Street. You may not want to answer this. Has there been discussion with other towns about this, I mean, it sort of seems to the layman to be sort of unconstitutional, but, that's just me, but there has been discussions.
Well, if I could answer that, Madam Chair, and I agree with the sentiment that, both that it's a stick and stick, and that it seems a little heavy-handed by the state. The state technically is not requiring us to, for us to do this. They're basically saying, if we don't do it, we're gonna take away some of the money you currently depend on to work on some of your projects and planning. Similar to what the federal government does, if this is a state, state doesn't have a certain speed limit, we're gonna take away your federal transportation funding. So it's, it's the same thing. But I agree with the concern about the state's approach.
All right, thank you.
All right, so we need a motion to create this committee, establish the committee?
I'll make a motion to establish the 3A advisory committee, to be made up of nine individuals appointed by the Select Board.
Second?
All right, it's been moved and seconded to establish an MBTA 3A rezoning advisory committee to be made up of nine members that would be appointed by the Select Board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, great. And the criteria that were set out in the recruitment posting, if that's fine with you, we'll maintain that. I will also add the, the mission statement to the website. We'll set up a website for this committee. They'll have a webpage on the town, on the town's website, so that'll be there. We have a volunteer form as well.
Okay. Any other questions, guys?
No.
Nope.
All right.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. I look forward to, to working with all of you on this one.
It will be interesting, for sure.
Right, thank you.
So the next thing we have is to open the Fall Annual Town Meeting warrant.
Yes, Madam Chair, and ask the board to vote to open the warrant for the Fall Annual Town Meeting for the purposes of considering adding and removing articles.
I'll make a motion to open the town meeting warrant to consider adding or removing articles.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to open the Fall Town Meeting warrant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have provided the board with an updated draft with some changes since your last meeting, for your consideration. But before we get into the details of that, I know I did forward an email that I had received from a member of the, or the treasurer of the Milis Youth Baseball about an issue and a concern about the ball field. And he had asked if he could discuss that with the board insofar that it may require the addition of an article at the Fall Town Meeting, or at least look at investigating some funding source to do that work.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Burby.
Good evening. Pete Burby, Eight Rose Road, and also of the Milis Youth Baseball nonprofit. As you know, I'm sure you know, we operate youth baseball opportunities for youth of Milis almost year-round, including some winter clinics, but mostly during spring, summer and fall outside. Our numbers have gone up and down over the years, somewhat due to COVID. We were able to have successful seasons during COVID, but baseball is back, back up. We have, we're certainly competing with some of the, a lot of the other youth sports during the fall, so we're not running an active fall season this year, but that's okay. The reason that I'm here is to see if we could, I would like to request on behalf of Milis Youth Baseball for the Select Board to identify funding to help us do some, for lack of a better word, some extraordinary maintenance to the majors field, which is over on the corner of Park, down by the high school across from pickleball courts. Due to the drought this year, we stopped watering, like everybody else, and unfortunately, if you, I did send some pictures, unfortunately I whiffed and was not able to put them on a card for you, but I'm happy to share them. The infield is, will not come back. That will be a dust bowl for foreseeable future, and it will impact our season next year. The timing is right now for us to do that extraordinary maintenance. We have contractor quotes from professionals that do field construction, so we've got a couple of options. We would like to request that the town fund the entire amount for that maintenance. And we have a couple of options to basically strip the field, rebuild the mounds, laser grade and replace with turf. All of the infield, as well as a six-foot apron at the back of the infield bordering the outfield, and then along the outfield, along the track. The reason that we feel that it is a valid expense for the town is that those fields are actually owned by the town. There's an agreement in place of some sort of another, whether it's written, or a gentleman's agreement, or a ladies and gentlemen's agreement, I don't know. We need to, we need to do some more research and discussion with the DPW Director. But we operate those fields almost completely through volunteer labor to maintain them. We rake every, before and after every game. Number of members of the Milis Youth Baseball Program, including some here tonight, put to get, you know, put their own, you know, sweat and tears, sweat and blood into maintaining the fields. We've had members donate benches, as you know, last, this, earlier this year, but this particular maintenance is beyond our means. Milis Youth Baseball does maintain, you know, our reserve account, so we could contribute, but at this time, we're asking that the town consider to pay for the maintenance. We have options, we have estimates in the amount of, say, 12 to, say, $16,000 for the work that we're requesting. I'm not certain if those, if those quotes are done at prevailing wage rates, that's something that would have to, I assume if the town were to take on the work, or take on the burden of funding, it would have to look into that, which is why when I emailed the request, I said approximately $20,000. I, I don't see any way that it would, it would exceed that. And we're grateful for anything that the town and the Select Board and the town voters would be willing to, to appropriate for that use.
So.
So the town, the board does have the authority to put an article on the warrant for that, if you would like. It's, you know, again, as, as Mr. Burby has stated, it's a, considered extraordinary maintenance. So essentially, it's, instead of something that could be, you know, usually included in, you know, a regular budget maintenance item, it's a little beyond that.
Okay.
I have spoken to the DPW Director this afternoon. He did confirm that that's town property. It was part of some recent land swaps that the town did with the, with the schools.
Right, and applied for on this.
Yes, and, and so that is under the jurisdiction of the town. The DPW Director also indicated he does not have, you know, 20,000 available in his budget to do this work. I mean, could be some assistance, you know, from the DPW, but he wouldn't have the bandwidth to be able to front that money for the, for this work.
So if we did put it on for the Fall Town Meeting, what would be, what would be the funding source we'd be looking at?
It would be certified free cash.
Okay.
Yeah, and we don't know what that is yet, do we?
It did come in. Certified free cash is 2.9 million.
Okay.
So there is, there is sufficient free cash for that. It's a relatively small item in the big scope of things. It's really just determining if it's a matter that the board is comfortable with, and certainly it is town property utilized by the townspeople.
Yeah, I'd suggest we put it on. We can discuss it in more detail as we do all the funding, but let's put it on as a placeholder, is my recommendation.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Will we have a number certain at some point? I mean, do you just put it on with the?
You put it not to exceed usually.
Do you, is that your 20 grand number?
That is my 20 grand, I guess, yeah. And, and going forward, I think we would be a bit more proactive to, now, this was unforeseen, you know, drought, water and ban, you know, your lawns, my lawn came back, most of my lawn came back. The infield over there is,
sparse.
You know, sparse is, is an understatement. The outfield came back great. The infield will not come back, and it, we will not have a season on that field if it remains as is. There is time. We can wait until Fall Town Meeting. I did verify that, that we can wait until Fall Town Meeting. But where, what I was gonna say is that, in the future, we can try to be a little bit more proactive to get this on to a request for community impact funding potentially, because there are similar requests. In my capacity as Finance Committee Member, you know, I'm aware that this could potentially qualify for future uses of community impact funds. What's your, you know, finite, finite eligibility or finite funding, but I'm sorry to come to you at the last minute, but that's where we are.
Any other questions?
Nope.
No. I can do one, I guess. By November 10th, do you think you'll have a more certain number if we were to add this?
Really, I think it's, we have quotes, official quotes. It's really make, asking, I believe it's going back to the contractor and saying, what is your prevailing wage quote?
Yeah, we could certainly do some research on that to see if, if this type of work falls under that.
Yeah.
It's not construction, so we can take a look at that. It's, I don't, I consider more of a maintenance than construction. So we'll, we'll look at it and see what the requirements are.
Then I, I'll make a motion to add this as article, whatever, number 27 right now, but we can rearrange it. Baseball field repairs not to exceed $20,000. Final cost to be determined hopefully prior to town meeting.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to add this item as an article for the Fall Town Meeting to take extraordinary repairs to the baseball field. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, that's the vote to add it to the warrant. They're still.
Yes.
I'm saying that about everything.
Don't you miss the window to fix it, though?
Hi, Lisa Harden, 56 Walnut. I just wanted to, I guess, ask a point of information about this request. Is this something that could conceivably come up again next year? I mean, we're probably gonna have another drought, and it's, is there any way to get it repaired so that it'll come back the way the outfield comes back? You know, like, so you don't, we don't, we're not in this, like, a cycle every year trying to repair the infield, and it's probably not just this field, it's, there's probably other places.
Okay, yeah, I think he can answer that, sure. You used the word turf. Do you mean, like, turf?
I believe it will be sotted, and I certainly can clarify that. We're, we're probably past the window where we can aerate, seed, germinate. However, I'll, happy to, to clarify that. But also, I just wanted to reiterate that there is a great amount of field maintenance and, and facilities maintenance that goes into the fields, both at the end of the season and at the start of the season by the volunteers. We are business owners, we are account reps, some, some of our members are traders, coaches come out of the woodworks. This particular maintenance, in the estimation of some of the people that have been on Milis baseball, youth baseball for decades, is well beyond our capacity. The quote, quotes that we have are from, again, from Drake Company in Holliston that specializes in this type work. This is what they recommend. You certainly could, we certainly could, you certainly could, the town can, get other quotes. I mean, this is where we went.
But that really wasn't the question. The question was, is this gonna happen, can this happen next year if we have another drought? Are they gonna, are they fixing this to, like, super standards?
I think that, so, we're doing what we can. This is beyond our, our capacity. I think next year, if there's a drought and there's a water ban, the discussion should be what stays open, what is exempt from the water ban, so if this doesn't happen. You can drive through Norfolk and go to the Pondville Complex. Their fields have never looked greener. They never looked greener in August. I mean, they watered. And that comes at a great expense, and, and I think we ought to look into that. Now, maybe the water gets curtailed, but it, it gets curtailed just enough to keep it alive so that the roots don't get absolutely cooked.
Yeah.
Yeah, from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, some watering to save $20,000 a year makes a lot of sense, you know, if we can find a way to legally do that. So that's a good question.
Thank you. Okay. So how do you want to approach this?
Madam Chair, I, I certainly can go through the articles on the warrant and focus mostly on the ones that have been added or any changes to them. I guess I would start with the one article that we're looking to remove from the warrant, and that has to do with the FEMA zoning bylaw.
Okay.
That can be deferred to a later time.
Okay. Is that already not on here?
That's already not on there, so I've taken that off the draft.
So don't look for it.
I was gonna say, I don't, I can't see it, but.
Did you even notice it? It's gone, is the question.
It used to be right then.
Sometimes they're not called.
So, so I would ask for a vote to, to remove that article from the warrant.
I'll make a motion to remove the FEMA article, number unknown, from the warrant.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to remove the FEMA floodplain zoning bylaw from the Fall Town Meeting warrant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So with that, Madam Chair, I'd just like to kind of quickly go through the articles, and then certainly if the board has any questions, you could stop me as I'm going through that.
And then we'd have a discussion about ordering at the end?
Yeah, at the end, if the board's in agreement, you could vote to add the articles that have been added since you last saw the warrant, and then the board could discuss and vote upon the order of the, of the articles.
Okay.
But I simply had to put them in some order just for the board to discuss them. So it's, it's, it's just the way I'm presenting them, but they can all, they can all be moved. So Article 1 is the unpaid bills. I just filled in the bills for the board's review. And generally, this is all paid for from free cash, because essentially, the free cash is what wasn't spent from the departments the prior year that rolls back in here. And we had well over 12,000 free cash from the, from these departments that was turned back over to the town. Article 2.
Can I make a comment on this one? Relating to the town clerk.
Sure.
Sure. It was one item.
Town clerk, D2G Group, $867 and 1 cent.
Yes.
That was the stanchions that we bought for the 2020 presidential election, and it was supposed to be paid out of COVID funds, and we paid it three times, and they kept, for some reason, they weren't processing the check, they kept sending it back. And so our office gave up on trying to pay it, and we gave it to Lisa Moore in Accounting and told her that it was from COVID funds, it shouldn't come out of town funds. And so I think we should look into that, because it really shouldn't, I don't think it should be paid out of free cash, should be paid out of the COVID funds.
We will take a look. I know we, we used, I think we used all but perhaps about $700 out of the CARES Act funds. Out of the $729,000 that was granted to the town, I think we used all but 700, because they did reject maybe one item. And I will double-check with the Finance Director on this item, but.
It was there a couple months ago, because we paid it the third time.
Yeah, I'll certainly get some clarification on it. Certainly, the, the state that was doing the initial audit on this was, there were certain items that they just had issues with. I agree with you, this should have been included, because this had to do with corralling people to keep them safe and distanced.
That's, it's my understanding, it wasn't, it wasn't rejected because it didn't fit under COVID. It was some financial thing with their bank?
Yeah.
So.
All right, we'll take a look.
Thank you.
Article 2, this has to do with marijuana impact fees. This was part of the planning at the Spring Annual Town Meeting. These were the items that were being deferred to the Fall Annual Town Meeting. Many of these are already in place. This just continues the funding for the remainder of this fiscal year for those items.
Okay.
Article 3.
Just a quick question. How many more years left on that funding source?
Well, that's a complicated question.
Okay.
So I would say, I would say two more years, but because of the recent change in state law, we'll have to review that and view how we work with the Cannabis Control Commission in dealing with that. But as far as the timeline perspective, two more years.
That's, yeah, okay, thanks. That's, that, yeah, okay, thanks.
I know what you're thinking.
I'm just thinking when it hits our budget, we got a lot of stuff to cover.
Right, right.
Article Three, um, this is the capital article. I put these items on here because these, these are the four items that were basically requested and reviewed by the capital committee, other than the items requiring borrowing. Um, these are the four, uh, actual purchase items. And I can certainly answer any questions that you may have about these. Certainly, uh, Mr. Schultz could as well. I know he's, he's sat in on all those meetings.
As well as Mr. Barubi.
And, and another member of the committee is here as well, uh, Mr. Barubi, uh, but.
It looks very reasonable this time.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, Article Four.
Okay, I'm just going to interject for one quick second here. Do any of you have copies of the warrant? It's, it's posted online. I don't know if you have anything with you, but I can make copies if you would like copies. Because I'm seeing.
I have a couple of copies.
I've got a spare beer right here if anybody wants it.
I do have a quick question. What's the wifi password for you?
Oh, that's a government secret.
Ooh, I might have it, hold on. I have to go look it up.
It's not that easy.
The one on the router?
It's like.
It works.
Hold on, it's coming.
It's okay, it's fine.
If you can't find it, I know what it is.
I got cell service.
No, I haven't, I haven't.
Alan, you want a copy?
Can I say this on TV?
Take a copy. Nicole, you want a copy?
No, this is the guest one.
That's the guest one?
Oh, that's the guest one, you can say it on TV. It's uppercase S.
It's actually not that hard.
It's two words together. The, the first word is sand with an uppercase S.
Sand?
Sand, like at the beach.
Yeah.
And then the second word is point with an uppercase P.
All mushed together.
Does it end in an S?
Very intuitive.
Alan, does it end in an S?
Nope.
Just point, point.
You should have guessed that, I don't know how you.
Our, our IT account, our director at the time, acting, named things after places he's lived or visited, I think. Because a lot of them are, are like that.
Okay. So, everyone's all set, doesn't need a copy?
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Come on.
Thank you. Article Four is the article for the feasibility study for the middle high school. This item has been, uh, reviewed by the MSBA and by bond council. So, this is the language, I believe you will, the final language you will see in two weeks when you formally approve and sign the warrant.
Got a question? Jim Duffy, Exchange Street. Do we have definition behind the, the request number? Do we know why it's 1.3 at all? Or, I mean, I'll go to the school board and ask them, but I don't know if we had definition for that yet.
I hesitate to get into too much detail on that.
I just know they spoke with the consultants in other towns.
Somebody picked the number. Schools work with the MSBA and the, and a consultant to come up with those, those numbers.
And it's always a not to exceed number.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, it was always we spend.
Yes.
Not always. That's where our free cash money comes back, things we turn back.
Uh, Article Five is the language relating to senior center. And actually, just before the meeting started, I received language from bond council, but did not have time to insert it in here. So, you will have an updated copy tomorrow with bond language council and, uh, bond council language in there, um, for a, uh, for the, for the project with a debt exclusion.
Okay.
The next several articles are unchanged. Article Six has to do with Gold Star families. Uh, Article Seven, um, is to change the residency requirement for local real estate tax exemptions for veterans down from two years to one year. Article Eight, um, is to adopt amendments to the personnel plan. And we'll, we'll provide a detail of those to the board, um, later this week.
I was asking for, where, where do we see the details?
Uh, I'll be issuing, I'll be sending something out, uh, later this week on that. And it mostly have to do with making adjustments, um, whereby a lot of our union contracts have added, say, Juneteenth is a holiday, added, added a personal day, have adjusted longevity, where the personnel plan hasn't been adjusted in a number of years for those things. So, it's just making sure, so it's just making sure the people, people who are non-union aren't falling too far behind with, with the basic benefits of the town.
And just to add, I was going to say, just to add, some of this is just language changes to bring it more up to current. So, it's not all, it's not all monetary. No, so there's a whole list, so yes, we can provide that.
And I think it's an important thing to note, some of this is getting it on the warrant as a placeholder because we have a certain deadline we have to hit, but then we get a lot more details coming. So, it's, you know, it's not uncommon to see stuff as a placeholder form. That doesn't mean we haven't investigated it.
But, but we'll be presenting those changes, uh, in two weeks at the board's next meeting. We'll be going into detail on all the changes. Article Nine, um, there's been some adjustment here. This article, we do have currently $24,000 in a, in a prior article, uh, set aside for environmental impact costs for that, for that area. Um, the additional $85,000 on top of the 24 will cover not only, um, settlement costs with the abutting property, but also Phase Two, um, reports which are required by the Department of Environmental Protection. So, the report requires us to hire, um, a licensed environmental professional to do testing and develop reports, uh, to the DEP on that property. So, these are, these are required by state law.
Okay.
Uh, the next item, Article Ten, um. I don't know if I went over this at the last meeting, but just to clarify, we did have a company, um, named Visa that was looking to put in a, uh, testing and manufacturing facility, um, in town. They have decided to withdraw, withdraw their, uh, applications for that, um, as part of their HCA with the town. They did have a $25,000 deposit, um, which was agreed that if they withdrew their project, they would receive, um, those funds back. So, this is simply authorizing 25,000 out of the HCA impact funds to be, uh, reimbursed based on their withdrawal.
Okay.
Uh, the next article, Article Eleven, is the snow and ice deficit. I don't believe there's any change since the last time, uh, the board discussed this. Article Twelve.
Excuse me, can I ask a question about this?
Sure. Lisa Harden, 56 Walnut. I recall that usually this is paid in the May town meeting. I was, um, I might have missed your earlier discussion about it, but isn't, don't we usually know by May what the snow and ice deficit is?
No, this is usually, it's usually, um, funded for the next year in May and usually at the November town meeting, we cover any deficit in that account.
Because there's more in May and June?
Well, no, we have to wait, we wait till the year is closed out. We know it, we know it to the penny at that point because sometimes some of these bills don't come in till May and June. So, the finance director tracks that and when the year is closed out, we certify the number and then bring it back.
Thanks.
Article Twelve, uh, is unchanged. That's the lead line service, eventory and replacement plan, um, through the Department of Public Works. Article Thirteen is, uh, funds, which I think you discussed the article at your last meeting, but it wasn't, it wasn't written in the document before you. This is the $56,864 for the Water Management Act Permit Renewal Support with Kleinfelder. Article Fourteen, um, is a, uh, I believe a new article here. Outlined in my memo to the board. This has to do with looking at, um, uh, doing a preliminary design of a PFAS treatment plant at well number three. And, uh, I know that the DPW director can certainly come into your next meeting if you have any specific questions about that.
Do I have a question on this one?
Yeah, I have a question too.
I have questions too. I don't know if we'll have answers. I don't even know where to begin, so.
What's, yeah.
Okay, so you.
I got an idea where to begin. What's well three testing right now?
I was just going to say that, okay then. We're on the same wavelength.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll ask, I don't have all the documentation in front of me. I know well number three was the next, the next highest one, um, on, on the wells. And, and I think the concern being that if for any reason, um, uh, this well goes out, then we'll, again, we'll be heavily dependent on wells one and two. So, this would really be the, the primary backup well, um, should wells number one and two, um, have to go offline for any reason.
And I, I really need to know the number. I, 165,000 for the study, or not, the design rather, is reasonable. Gives us a design to put on the shelf, but, I mean, when it gets into $6 million more for, uh, construction of plant, I'm gonna, I'm gonna need to see some numbers that are trending the wrong way.
Yes, I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask the DPW director to provide the latest numbers at your next meeting.
Mr. Duffy?
Uh, yeah, Jim Duffy, Exchange Street. I thought we were building a $6 million plant to, to handle all the water.
Well, no, it's wells one and two only.
We go up to well number six.
Not clear, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, then the next question, I don't know where the record is, and which well has what levels of PFAS? Do they all?
Uh, they all, I think they all have a level of it. But, it's once it reaches a certain threshold that we have to pull them offline and treat.
But there's no way to treat all the water?
No.
They, they, they don't get out, amalgamated somewhere.
We investigated that as an option, building one central one. It was far more expensive than building.
At the time.
Well, theoretically, we may not have to do every one of the wells either because if three of the wells being fully treated gives us the ability to weather a storm if the other ones go down, that, that might work. And that was the cost of trying, they're, they're not in the same areas is the problem.
My next question would be, why isn't the design reusable?
Probably because of location. Right. Because they're not.
Just the physical logistics, that's really what all this is?
Yep.
It'll be the same.
The mass nation of how you do it.
Yeah.
I would say parts of it are, but, but certainly there's, there's condition, there's conditions that are different at every site.
It's a physical, it's a physical plant part of it.
Yeah, thank you.
How to attach it to the building, how to attach it to the water lines.
And there are grants available that will cover parts of this as well.
So, that makes it more attractive.
Parts of the design?
Should have led with.
Parts, yeah. So, that, that again.
Always should have to lead with the grants.
Yeah, grants first. Yeah, so, yeah, but before we build a, yeah, before we move on a $6 million plant, I, I'm really going to need to see.
Right.
Some bad numbers.
And, and I think that was the intent when Mr. McKay was, was speaking about it is that, like you said, this is worst case scenario. If we had to do it, we'll have the design ready to go. But, right, none of us.
It saves a considerable amount of time if you need to go out and actually build it, which is much more expensive.
Right.
Yep. Okay.
So, Article Fifteen, um, is the, uh, purchase and development of sewer and stormwater asset management system. And this one, uh, I believe has a, uh, 100% grant, um, that the town, um, can get in relation to this, but there's a process. The town actually has to appropriate the funding and, and actually go through a borrowing process before we can get reimbursement. So, uh, it, it does seem the long way around the barn. The state makes you do this, but that's the type of grant it is. It has to do with, uh, borrowing relief. So.
Okay.
Uh, the next item, Article Sixteen, is $130,333.61 for engineering services for an infiltration and inflow investigation project. I think that was discussed, um, at a prior meeting. And Article Seventeen, um, uh, the next, uh, this article, I have spoken with the finance director. We currently have approximately $60,000 on our unemployment account. We do like to keep it in the range of 80,000 to 90,000 in that account. We don't currently have anyone on our unemployment rolls, thankfully. But we'd like to get that account up, back up to that level.
Is that like a certain percent of something?
Yeah, it's, it's based on, it's based on our historical averages. We have ebbs and flows of this. At the beginning of the pandemic, we, we definitely had some pressure on this account. But, um, but it stabilized and we're in good shape now. We just want to bring it back up to that standard level. The next item, Article Eighteen, has to do with, um, street acceptances. Uh, I did just get this language, uh, today and working both with, uh, Mr. American and, um, with town council, uh, to see if the town will vote to accept Pearl Street, Deborah Lane and Teresa Drive as public ways in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 82, Section 23. Said ways being depicted on plans entitled Pearl Street, Street Acceptance Plan of Land in Millis, Deborah Lane, Street Acceptance Plan of Land in Millis, and Teresa Drive, Street Acceptance Plan of Land in Millis, all dated August 11th, 2022. A copy of which, um, will be placed on file with the town clerk's office at least seven days prior to the town meeting and to authorize the select board to accept deeds and easements in such ways along with any pertinent drainage or utility easements that the select board deemed necessary for such purposes. So, that, and the board will need to have a, uh, a hearing to lay out the roads. And I'm recommending the board have that on November 7th. Probably will request town council to be here for that hearing.
Is, is this Hickory Hills?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
So, the next, um, few articles, um, are recommendations from the finance director and I in relation to certain, um, of the town savings accounts. The first one being the OPEB trust fund account. We're recommending that 50,000 from free cash, um, be deposited into that account. We haven't deposited any funds into that account in several years. So, it's something our auditors strongly recommend we, we do on a regular basis. Article Twenty, this is the new, uh, Chapter 41, Section 111F Injury Leave Indemnity Fund. That, uh, was, this was set up back at the spring annual town meeting. We're recommending that $300,000 in free cash be deposited into that account. This, this is the account that helps us deal with, um, when, uh, public safety officers are out injured on duty. And it, there is, we do have insurance for that, but the insurance does not cover 100% of the costs associated with that. This will help fund some of those costs. We also, the town has also, um, uh, adopted Mass General Law, Chapter 100B, which is, um, a law that has the town cover public safety officers that have medical, um, issues related to their service with the town. And the town, through that, has agreed to cover those costs, um, related to those injuries for the rest of their lives. So, that, that is something that, um, uh, we should keep in mind in, in trying to set up this fund and having those funds set aside. Article Twenty-one, um, would be the establishment of a new special purpose stabilization fund for the purchase of ambulances. I know that the fire chief has discussed this in the past and I believe this was discussed, um, at the last meeting. The last regular article is for the stabilization fund.
I want to go back to Article Twenty-one for just a minute.
Sure.
We had been setting aside funds from the ambulance runs to fund a new ambulance.
That's within, yeah.
And it, would those funds be going towards the stabilization fund? Is that how we'd be doing that?
Some of those funds would be.
Because, because when we added those other firemen or firefighters, one of the comments I asked was, will we have enough money to fund ambulances in the future? And I got an absolutely yes, so.
This is in direct relation to that question.
So, those, so we're not going to be appropriating $300,000 into this at some point in the future to fund it? It's going to be just a place to compile the money where it's absolutely safe.
So, the ambulance receipts, a portion of ambulance receipts will go into this account in, in a, in a timeframe in which the, when the next ambulance is needed, there'll be enough there to cover the ambulance. That's the purpose of it.
That's just, that's the purpose. I didn't want to see a $300,000 appropriation be coming up on that.
Right, so when the last.
Yes.
Question on that?
Sure.
Pete Ruby, 8 Rose Road, also the finance committee chair. And we've discussed this as well in finance committee and, for a number of years since, uh, the ambulance and the safer grant has come along. I, I think that question needs to be parsed even a little further in the sense that just because you create this fund does not mean that it's going to have enough in it at the time that an ambulance is needed. So, those funds will be dedicated for an ambulance purchase, but they may not be the whole 300,000 or whatever an ambulance. or whatever an ambulance costs. It's not cheap.
Right.
And I think we need to be crystal clear on that because rightly so, as with all things town, public finance, it needs to be scrutinized. But, again, clarity states is prudent that we make sure people understand this money will go towards an ambulance purchase. That's not to say that it's the only funding source. It's the only thing that the funds can be used for, but it may require supplement at some point in time.
Right. I mean, it's, it's the goal, but it doesn't mean that's automatically what's going to happen.
Yeah, and the assurances were pretty, I agree with Pete, that, that we may have to use other funds at some point, but, um, the assurances are pretty high, that, that we are going to get enough off the ambulances to do this. And I would be very disappointed if we were supplementing more than, you know, ten, twenty percent of an ambulance out of operating funds. That would, that would be clearly not what was said when we put the safer grant and brought those firefighters on. Yeah.
Well, just a quick question.
Yeah.
Jim Duffy, Exchange Street. Just along those lines, though, do we understand the state of the state with respect to life cycles of our current ambulances and when we actually may be looking at this? Because that's going to be, that's a question I would want to know. It's like, great, we're setting this up, but next year, to your point, there's, you know, whatever.
It's on the.
The town, the town actually recently.
That'd be nice to have laid out as part of this, right? So people get an understanding of, you know.
It, it, and that's a great question. It actually is, is part of the capital plan. Um, the capital committee has a schedule of anticipated purchases, including the fire department for its equipment. Um, recently, the town meeting approved the purchase, I believe, of a new, new ambulance and a, um.
Ladder truck?
A, a new truck, a new engine, um, which we're expecting hopefully next summer.
Yeah.
There's long wait times for the vehicles. Um, but based on that and based on when we expect the next vehicle, and we, we certainly expect this to have a healthy amount of funding in it by the time the next ambulance is needed. That's the anticipation.
And I have a question on the stabilization, Article twenty. Right now, we have a claim in, what, I, I believe, is that right?
Do you mean for the one eleven O?
Yeah.
We have several.
We have, actually, we have two that just came on board in September.
Okay.
So two of the, um, public safety officials that, that went on to retirement disability have now maxed out and gone above the three hundred thousand. So the limit was originally three hundred thousand. One has gone above, one has hit the ten-year mark. Insurance won't cover for past ten years.
Okay.
So we're on the hook either way. Um, we've increased the limit to a million, so going forward, it will take longer, but we're still on the hook for anyone over ten years.
Okay.
Yeah, we have increased the limits to the maximum allowed by the insurance company.
I'm, I'm just wondering about the timing of this as we go into the fall town meeting. Um, I'm sorry, the spring town meeting, to make sure we have enough.
Exactly.
Two point nine million's a lot of money. Don't get me wrong.
Yes, I think, and, and again, this is part of the recommendation of the, uh, of the finance director and I, understanding that, um, we understand that there's an unusually high number of funds being put aside in certain, you know, savings, town savings accounts, essentially, but that's with the knowledge that, um, you know, this is, uh, this is a year where we have a higher than usual amount of free cash, and we, and, and certainly I can ask the finance director to do a, a breakdown of the, uh, must fund and so forth. So we have that for the spring.
I'd like to know what's coming up in the spring. And also, you know, if, and we don't know this because they don't have any information, but, um, the special education students that we had to fund last year as emergency basis, that five hundred thousand dollar increase that we funded, three sixty, you know, kind of, uh, circuit breakers come in, what are the numbers, just anything. And so I, we won't know that for this town meeting. What I'm saying is, do we want to be a little hesitant to lock up money until we know all of those things, um, at that point? And we, and we just got the numbers tonight, so it's a little tricky to assess it all.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with putting it on here and funding it at some level. I'm just not sure how much we want to fund at that point.
Well, you could always reduce the amount in the motion if, if, if in the next, um, month, we find that, uh, after we review the numbers again, if we find that this has any concerning, concerns about that.
Yeah, because it would avoid borrowing, I mean, just with two point nine million, just theoretically, if you funded the school study, you'd avoid all the borrowing and all the borrowing costs. It, it just gives you an option there that you could look at. We're in a very cash-rich position, and, uh, let's try to use it right, so we don't burden future, you know, years with this year's expenses if we can. I'm sure this is a question we'll need to ask the, uh, finance director, but how is it so high? We don't have to answer that now.
I will, yeah, I will ask her to talk about some of that. We did, a lot of it is, is new growth and, and building permits and things like that that came in very strong.
I'm used to seeing four hundred thousand being as a windfall year, not two point nine million. You know, Pete's seen the same thing, yeah. Four fifty was like, we're thrilled.
Um, and the last, uh, four items listed, I just listed the, um, the four petition articles. Um, we have three articles in relation to a senior center and, uh, one article in relation to, um, the Jasper Hill Rossi.
Rock Lawn.
Yeah, Rock Lawn property.
Yeah. I don't know if the petitioner would identify them as senior center, because one is pickleball and tennis courts entirely. Another one is relocating.
Agreed.
A, uh, town offices. The third one does talk about seniors. So one of the three definitely does, but the other.
Somewhat, really.
The other, yeah.
The other two are, don't really, they're, it's implicit, but.
So at this point.
So the articles that, um.
Excuse me, Ms. Chair, can I just make your comments about these four articles in general?
Sure.
You gotta come up, though. Nobody wants to come up.
Yeah.
We don't want to talk specifics, really?
No. Lisa Harden, fifty-six Walnut. Um, after this meeting, could we have the language of these articles in the, you know, public.
They will be put in the draft. I think they're, we could certainly post the actual, um, petition articles on the town's website if we haven't done so already.
Yeah, they are posted on.
But it is part of the warrant at this point.
They haven't been put into the warrant yet, right?
Yeah, and they will be, they will be after tonight.
Well, they have to be in the warrant, so.
They will be in the warrant that's signed by the board, absolutely.
I'm just, it would be helpful if people in the town could see what you're talking about, that's all.
Milis Public Forum, there's three out of four up there.
Yeah, it's on the town website.
Should be on the town website.
I don't remember those.
Which one, which one did they leave out?
Couldn't find them on the town website.
Couldn't find them on the town website.
Until they were in the finance committee stuff, so I don't know if there's a place where we keep those.
They were on the select board.
Yeah, I, I think it makes sense to put them on.
Well, after the board, after the board's meeting tonight and, and see where the order of the articles is, I will cer- we will certainly add the language of those, uh, of those articles within the text.
Yep, okay, sounds good. Um, so at this point, we would discuss the ordering?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I had, I had a few thoughts. Um, as with tradition, I was going to suggest that we leave the petitioned articles at the end, because that's where they usually are. Um, also, usually towards the end, we do have like the stabilization, the OPEB, unemployment account, stuff like that's usually towards the end, too. So I would recommend moving those, um, just prior to the petitioned articles. Um, I would also think moving under capital items, moving up, um, like the personnel plan changes, um.
Move it under capital, you're saying?
Yeah, move it under capital. Because a lot of the, I mean, I guess capital items isn't necessarily like housekeeping, um, but a lot of that stuff seems to happen towards the top, and then, you know, the stabilization and the OPEB and all that happens towards the end.
You'd be looking to move the personnel plan changes to right after the capital items.
Yep.
Which it is housekeeping, pretty much, so.
It is housekeeping.
Um.
And the other advantage of that, I mean, even if it's the third article, not after capital, but before, it gives you a chance to get through some of the housekeeping, although, you know, the snow and ice isn't, uh.
Before many major debates.
Yeah, before you get into a heavily debatable item. Um, at capital, in this case, probably won't be, but it could be. Uh, it's only one hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
But I like to give time for people to check in late, because they do tend to filter in.
Well, so we could move, um, we could swap, we could do number three as personnel plan, number four is capital.
Yep.
And then, um, I don't have actually a large opinion about everything in the middle and where it exists. I think, I think it looks fine enough to me. Um, I think, I think the most contentious thing, you know, is obviously going to be the senior center, and I don't think anyone's going to be happy with placement of that, whether it's in the beginning or at the end. I think there's probably going to be rumblings about wherever it's placed.
Yeah.
And I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that people conduct themselves in the meeting with a great level of decorum and don't try to, um, you know, incorrectly revisit topics at the end. Um, and I mean, that is the moderator discretion, so hopefully the moderator,
Yeah.
you know, has, is in tune to that. Um, so that, those are, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I, I'm happy to see the senior center near the top of the warrant. In years gone by, the school was second to last item. I think we started talking about it.
Yeah.
Oh, not the second, but it was very towards the end. Cause we started talking about it about nine-thirty or ten o'clock, which, after my fifteen-minute comment period, it got, uh, very late by the time we got home, but it was almost the last item, and I, that was done to prevent the reconsideration.
Reconsideration.
But I don't think that I, but I think in this case, I would like to see the, the senior center towards the top in the first five or six articles makes sense. I, I think that putting it at the end is going to be counterproductive. I never liked that, the way it had been done, putting the override articles last.
Most controversial at the end, yeah.
I, I think that, I mean, I don't want anybody to leave a town meeting, but, um, if you're there for the feasibility study or the senior center, and you're going to be disgruntled as we talk about stormwater asset management systems, um, it might be better to get the important one, the, the, the ones that people put up for out of the way first, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I will say publicly for the record that, um, we really encourage everyone to come to town meeting and act, and stay for the entirety of town meeting, because all of these are important decisions. Um, obviously, they're not as big as sixteen million dollars, um, but they're all big decisions and would be, and it's part of, it's our, our money, it's the town's money.
And I just mean, but I mean, I don't want the question moved quickly to get through it, as happens sometimes when you're rushing through stuff. People move the question just to get on to the one they want to get to.
And again, moderator discretion, too, there, so hopefully, um.
But if it's near the top, I think we're good. They can move unpaid bills quickly.
Yeah.
I only have one comment on the, on the order. I agree with everything. Uh, the capital up front, the, um, petitioned in the back, the middle.
Whatever, yeah.
But I would like to see the senior center, um, ahead of the school. Why? Because the school's coming at one point three. If it passes, which, I don't know, uh, and then you get the senior, and I feel as if it's already, it's a little bit tilt till we already just spent one point three and dispose. So that would be my only comment. I think it's a little bit of a handicap to have it come after the school.
Madam Chair, if I may, just, there's, there's no magic to that. I just, I just put them in in a general order, so there's no special reason why one is in front of the others. So it's really up to the boy to determine what you think is most appropriate.
The only thing I would say to that is that they're separate in that it's not an override for the school one, whereas.
I know, but, well, people, I get that, and.
Okay.
Craig has told me that six times, and I'm not sure if that will matter to anybody other than the spending. That's all.
Well, yeah.
It's up to you.
Okay.
I was liking the order because it kind of stepped, got our toes wet with capital for a little bit. One point three, sixteen, and then it's, you know, the other direction after that. You know, it's more housekeeping and more typical, you know?
Slapping them off.
Yeah, right.
And also, quite honestly, the chiller is going to be a real issue come July. Or they keep telling me that, at least, so.
Yes, it is true.
Right now, we're concerned about the heat.
Right, right, right.
That's seasonal.
All right, so right now, where we're at is we're in preliminary agreement on everything except potentially, um, this middle high school feasibility study and the senior center.
We're now, what, five and six, right?
Five and six, with, with a change.
New numbers would be five and six.
Yes.
I don't know how I feel.
I mean, I, I, I guess what I look at, we've already moved the senior center off of one of the last items, because overrides always are right towards the end. Petitions are always last. Zoning is very much towards the end, sorry, but, uh, but, uh, override articles were right there towards the end typically, and that made for a bad night. So moving it forward, I think we've done a, an effort to solve that, and, uh, at one point, I was arguing for specials for overrides, but I was the only one arguing for that. So.
Oh, God, a special town meeting? I'm like, what does he mean, specials?
Special town meeting. When we did the school, we wanted to do a special town meeting, because we didn't want to make it be a seven-hour meeting.
You know Quorum is ten percent of all registered voters?
Is it ten? I thought it was.
Ten.
Don't forget that. Well, we would have had it.
Of all registered voters?
For the school, we would have, yeah, there were.
We've been close.
Yeah, very close, yeah. But anyway, um.
I digress.
Um, or two nights is the other way. We could have done it, too. But anyway, that's a separate issue. By moving it forward to this one, I, I don't know, I, I understand what you're saying, Ellen, it works the other way, too. If we just spent sixteen, do people want to spend one point three? I think the argument works both directions.
I get it, I get it. I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah.
All right.
No hot feelings, guys, if you don't want to do this.
Well, that's my biggest concern, Ellen.
I know, I can tell it is, because we're kicking me under the table here.
All right. I'm, I'm gonna say we go with it as it is.
I'll second. I'll make a motion to go with it as it is.
All right, do we need a motion? How about we just accept?
How about you say it?
Let's move, let's move three and four.
Just, just for the, just for formal, um, I, I will be asking the board to vote to add, um, as listed currently in your chart, Articles thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, which are new from your last.
Oh, actually, we need to add in the, um.
What about the baseball? That guy's.
We, we already added.
You already added that.
You added the baseball.
Baseball's added.
Oh, where does that go?
Yeah, you'll have to decide where that's going.
Before the petitions, right?
Can they cry? That would be good.
Oh, my gosh.
There's no crying in baseball.
There's no crying.
I know. I think the ca- I, I think the baseball would go near the capital. I think it would go.
There's definitely crying.
I would go, I would put it near the capital.
You can put it right after the capital if you want.
Yeah, because it's the same nature as capitals, to the capital.
Sure.
Yeah.
So it'll be personnel.
So that will be actually number five, right?
Right. And then the feasibility will be six, and senior center will be seven.
And the kids can come, watch Democracy in Action, and go home before we get to the other ones.
And we just.
Before they watch the fighting begin.
We just need, as part of the vote, that Articles, the current listed Articles of thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, their, their numbers will change, but that those four currently listed Articles be added to the warrant.
I'll make a motion to add the Articles listed as thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen to the warrant.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to add Articles currently listed as thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen to the warrant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So how, do we need to vote on reordering, or do we just reorder?
Yeah, just a final, yeah, I'd ask just for, uh, um, have you taken any votes to, yeah, a final vote, um, really, two? You could say that to, yeah, to move Artic- current Article eight to Artic- as Article, new Article, um, three. And then add.
Capital as four.
Baseball as five, and then the rest down the list.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move Article eight to, to the new Article three, insert baseball immediately after capital. God knows what number that will be.
Five.
Five.
Five, and, uh, and leave the rest as listed.
Except we're moving unemployment and OPEB and stuff at the bottom, aren't we? Now we're leaving it?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, that's fine, whatever, that's fine.
I mean, they're all shifting numbers, but they're still in the same order.
They're very close.
Yeah, they're close at the bottom. Okay, um.
Oh, so that's, am I seconding him?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, great. It's been moved and seconded to reorder the fall town meeting article list Okay, great. It's been moved and seconded to reorder the fall town meeting article list as discussed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, we need to close the fall town meeting warrant again.
I'll make a motion to close the fall town meeting warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the fall town meeting warrant. All those in favor?
Aye.
The warrant is now closed. Okay, and then that is all we have on our agenda, correct?
It's only 10 after eight. This can't be right.
Are we doing anything with the easels? Is that next week?
I don't have it listed.
All right, good.
Yeah, we'll do it next time.
It's not on the agenda. We can't talk about it.
I'll have another Charles River meeting under my belt by then.
There you go.
I'm coming with you.
October 12.
I'm coming with you. Can I come with you?
Sure.
If we make it a meeting.
You have to post it as a meeting, unfortunately, but I mean.
Charles, Charles River is the 12th, is what you're saying, right? The, the slipboard meeting is the 17th.
You can, you can post a meeting as long as you don't, you don't.
Actually, we got the opinion that as long as they don't sit together or talk.
Yes, technically, if you don't.
Be antisocial. I know that's hard.
It is hard for me, but.
Give it a go.
I'll, I'll try to, I can do that.
Okay, 3:00.
Let's do it. Oh, 3:00?
Yep.
They have afternoon meetings, yes.
Yeah, I'd get a sitter for that one.
Yeah, that'll be fun.
Being for.
It is an expensive meeting. Okay, so I guess I will take a motion.
Take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. And thank you, Mills Community Media.
On the schedule, I mentioned December 5.